Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. It's six thirty and it was a beautiful day, but I wish it would light still. But the records show that all the councilors are here and I think they're happy. Are you happy?
Oh, we're looking at the pennants.
Oh, I like that. I like that.
I'm waiting for the church.
Okay.
There you go.
I like that. You have minutes from the October twenty-fourth evening. Are they okay with you?
No to a break.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Comments, anybody's jumping up to say anything this evening? I see no one jumping up. I will continue moving forward. Couple of things. We have, we've tried to regularly work in work sessions for our council. And what I'd like to do is two things. One, the second meeting in December is on the twenty-sixth. And if nobody objects, please don't, let's council, let's not have a meeting the day after Christmas. Is that okay with everybody?
Especially yes.
That's true, that makes our ladies. I'd also like to suggest that since we don't have a second meeting in December, that we do our work session a week earlier on the nineteenth. And that we have a chance to talk about stuff. And I have discussion of elections, the twenty thirty plan, transportation issues, succession planning. But that will give staff time to be prepared, or truly time to be prepared. And we can do that on the nineteenth. Does that seem okay with everybody? Danny, you good? Staff gonna be okay with that?
Six thirty?
Yeah, six thirty. It's a work session. I don't end, at this point, I don't plan for any multiple business unless something changes, which I would let you know, but we'll do it the nineteenth. And Karen, can you make sure that that's all officially official? And we can do that downstairs? Thank you. And maybe it's now.
The nineteenth of November?
December. December. And maybe there'll be snacks for those of us who get hungry. Under, other things I'd like to report on. We hosted a meeting of a number of school districts in other cities from here in Pope County to take a look at the tourism opportunities for the World Track and Field Championships that happened in two thousand twenty-one. It's the third largest sporting event in the world. And they have training camps that are going to have to take place. And Western Irving University, obviously, with their dormitories are a wonderful place, our hotel and some others, and they're wonderful facilities. And so we're hosting, we put together a group, Sean and the intern and David, we're all there. We had a good turnout, there's lots of interest. And we'll see what comes together. There's not much of a capital outlay, other than a little promotional materials. And they won't make a final decision until probably sometime late nineteen. So just putting a packet of information together to get those national governing bodies, letting them know that we're here because they do bring not just teams and coaches, but fans and moms and dads and all. It can be pretty, I know some of you know that I did compete for the United States in the first bowl championships. And so this is a unique opportunity and it's pretty exciting. So anyway, I can go on. I do have, I just, I'm really proud to be able to say that I get an opportunity this Saturday to speak to a citizenship class that's being held over at St. Patrick's. Folks becoming naturalized citizens. And I'm really excited to do that because it was December of nineteen sixty-one that I became a United States citizen. And so I still remember it. And they gave me the brand new fifty-star flag back then. And my dad was there in his class eight uniform. And I can tell more stories. And I also, trying to be good about this. And I also wanted to just give some kudos to the Independence Heritage Museum. They hosted the new military uniform display. It was a full house. Number of folks were there, some people that donated uniforms, others that had worn the uniform, family and friends. And it's a nice event. So I just want to let the staff know that I appreciate the opportunity to be there. It was a nice event. And thank you for all the work that they did there. Okay, that's enough for me, I mean, for a while. How about we let manager Klein have a chance to visit with us for a few minutes?
My turn to go. Tech, Mr. Turp.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. So I just want to echo the covenants on the museum event. That was really very special. Thank you, didn't have to stand in front of everyone. Everybody else is involved in it. The speaker was very emotional, very, he was a writer. It was very special. He's been a long time, his interest, of course, is military. Spent a lot of time talking about the impacts of military, of military life on, you know, on the folks in the military and on civilians and the like. So it was fascinating and it was, you know, very emotional, his presentation. Two thousand twenty-one, in addition to being the international sports event, is also one other event of interest to us. The International Association of City Managers and City Campaigners will have their annual meeting, their meeting in Portland for the second time. That brings about five thousand officials. This year, officials from two different countries. In our case, it's somewhere in San Antonio. And it was a huge event, it was a great event. But coming to Portland, we're hoping that, you know, we, you know, we said hoping that independence will be, will cost you to take advantage of that opportunity when it comes. It's not that far down the road. And that'll be more city officials and less visitors. So another thing of just sort of national interest, we all had a conversation about the tax bills. Just a heads on, an Oregon Finance, the Oregon Government Finance Association just sent a letter to our Senator Wyman and because of his role on the finance committee. But that, at least from the city municipal perspective, it definitely has potential negative consequences when you eliminate the tax-free, exactly, some, the tax-free municipal bonding capabilities. We have a number of different things that we enter into the municipal financing pool, at least of which is our, our refinance that we're about to close on. I'm hoping the timing on that is fine and survives, you know, the changes. Our sewer project gets its sources of funding in part from municipal bonds, our riverfront art award and our lottery award from legislation. The loans are all tied to bond issues that are tax exempt. So all of those things can be impacted by those kinds of changes to the tax code. So just awareness about that. If you, you know, I don't know what your conditions, because they are in the tax book, but just much enough from a municipal perspective, there's cause for concern. Moving on down my list. The old city hall, they received our first payment on the budget that we had out there. Maybe our only payment, but regardless, we received the payment. So, you know, we're happy to have that happen. I don't know the exact amount. Sean and I will be speaking in about two weeks to a Western Oregon university class. We'll be talking to them about Independence Landing and the lessons that can be learned by students of the up and coming poli sci and public administrators. Some of the lessons that they can learn and some of the, you know, some of the choices that, you know, we all engaged in that project. So, it should be kind of fun. We did that last, last year?
You did it last year, I did it.
Oh, I did it last year, okay. It was fun. Anyway, that's on. The old wine space, the old wine space, the wine shop is gearing up and should be opening its doors relatively shortly.
Where's that?
At the, right, the cheese is made.
Right by the flashy red light where the wine store used to be. It's a lot of amazing sonics, isn't it?
Wine, yeah, wine for sale, you know, bottles, you know, shot up as well as tasting. I'm sure we're all, you said we do, there's a previous space, but it's, should be kind of a functional space. There'll be some, you know, opportunity for food and wine, drink by the glass, I believe. Should be nice. Taylor's, at least. If you didn't know that, dessert bar and, or dessert house and gift shop. They include in the old soda fountain, we understand. Maybe.
Do you know your original original soda fountain?
Anyway, Taylor's is coming back to life, I don't know the name, but it's coming back to life. So that has been executed and that will be underway very shortly. We hope that, as we provided the son, the side monies to support the restoration of the building and to assure that, you know, to ensure that jobs are created there. So that's a part of what we did, wouldn't have been doing for years. Let's see. We have a meeting tomorrow to consider a possible proposal for affordable attainable housing. So we've got to focus on that as well and kind of keep our efforts on that. Couple of things in all to park planning and park construction. So this might be the year of the park. We have the bid documents being prepared as we speak for the Independence Landing Riverfront Park. I meant today to sort of narrow down more of the options. And we should have bid documents timed before a spring bid on that project going forward. We have even perhaps even more fun and exciting is the master planning process for the main Riverview Park. That will be kicking off probably within its first of two public outreach meetings in starting January. So that'll be an opportunity for a lot of public engagement on that project, including the council, our presidential, public service advisory boards in that effort. So that's going to be a kind of a fun and exciting project. That'll take, you know, six months to get through that. So that'll be briefly. And we'll be working on, you know, developing the resources to build what we plan, you know, going forward as well. A lot of work is happening on the Quail Run and some of these as well as Dollar Chamber. So those continue to move forward. Quail Run is all ready to start selling lots. So they have a couple more bullet point items to complete. It may be done, I don't know, but they were pretty close.
They looked close.
Yeah, it should be, it should be about ready there. The New Orleans Institute has a new executive director, a gentleman named Mike Cullin, not to be confused with Michael Colby. Hopefully, really not to be confused with Michael Colby. My colleague, we're hoping will be a breath of fresh air. And finally, I was a presenter at the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training last week along with three other, two other managers and a city councillor from Beaverton. And we were talking to aspiring police chiefs, folks that are wanting to become police chiefs in their, in their, in their business. So that was a big hour and a half to two hour session. They were real pleased with the comments we got back, or they wish it was longer. So they were very engaged and they were happy that they really want to know about all sides of the business and go into the work, the lives open. So it was a fun, it was a fun opportunity. I was really thrilled to be invited to it. So that's what I have for you this evening. Unless you have questions, this evening.
Questions for the manager? Okay, let's move forward. Good evening.
Mr. Taffey's on your, status before the meeting's starting. Evening. So what I just gave you is, the city manager had referenced at the beginning of his report. And it has to do with some legislation that's coming down on the federal level regarding tax exempt bondings. And we, we leverage that ability to go for tax exempt bondings most of the time. The benefits of that is really low interest costs on those. So if all of those become taxable bonds, then we lose our ability to do a lot of the projects that we do do now. So that's where that funding comes from.
Thank you.
Aside from my written report and which included the the information about the franchise fees, that's kind of a follow-up on that discussion. There's been, there was another, another question, kind of earlier this month, Councilor Day, copying me on an email requesting more information about the city's debt. So I wanted to share hopefully some clarification and some more information so that we get a little more clarity on that.
Can you, or will it be in the notes or something?
Pardon me?
Will that be in the notes? It wasn't my question, it was just a question I had, I was just relating it.
Right.
But I need something to be able to pass.
So the, the email, the concerns that I garnered out of the email was concerns about the level of debt. And that we seem to have the appearance of constantly issuing debt. So the city at June thirty, two thousand seventeen, had a total debt balance of thirty-two million, seven eighty-one. Of this, three point seven million is paid from the water and sewer revenues. Ten point nine million is my net debt. Four point six million, rating report, a rating has not changed. It's still an A minus stable. It's, we had hoped for improved, but, you know, nothing has really changed for the last time so much.
But is that a annual thing?
We have been doing it annually. We have, we do it ahead of every issue and we do a market issue. We have to go through the rating on those two bonds. So they, at the same time that they did the rating for this funding, they also kept the same rating on our other outstanding bonds. So nothing, nothing has changed. As far as the rest, for any more of the debt discussion, I would like to refer you to the audit report. There is lots of information about our debt in the audit report. For the two thousand sixteen audit, I can give you the specific page numbers that talk about debt. In our two thousand seventeen audit, we hope to have that by the end of this month. Certainly by the, for the beginning of next month, we should have that. I can point you right to the debt schedules and it talks, in the audit report, in the footnotes, it talks about what each debt issue is for and how it's being paid.
Yeah, that's probably good idea, wait till they, until they.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Gloria, before you go on, will you run down that list of what the debt is? I got three point seven million for water sewer, ten point nine for my net, four point nine for?
Four point six.
Six.
Four. That's the GL one.
Okay.
And that's purely property taxes, that's a special property tax, that is specific.
And thirteen?
Thirteen is, that's the ICC debt. It's paid partially from urban renewal taxes and the rest is paid from the city general.
And the rest of it was the assessment loan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And one other thing that, and I certainly don't want you to produce it this time, but the next time we do a quarterly report, could we please get an update of all of the transfers in and out of the interloan funds and what the balances on each arm?
Okay, so for the interfund loans?
Thank you, I said it backwards.
That's okay. For the interfund loans, I do not do any quarterly or monthly transfers for those. Those are saved for the end of the year because often we do not have to do new interfund loans that we had budgeted for. Interfund loan payments, those are scheduled. The reason I don't do those either is because sometimes the pay fund can't completely pay off that interfund loan instead of just making the annual payment. So I save those as a, as a budget item.
Okay, so for all intents and purposes, if we look at the two thousand sixteen, seventeen annual report, it'll still be like that. It'll still, that will be the accurate picture because nothing will be done until the end of seventeen eighteen.
Correct.
Okay.
Just a question for the finance. So where's the three point five million for the hotel, the water?
So that project is, is still not, not closed? So that loan hasn't closed, so that's not included in this?
But we've already done, we've already done the work. I mean, there's three million of our roughly.
Right, so the IFA loan that is, that is for that project, for the Independence Landing infrastructure project, that will be paid from urban renewal taxes, which will be generated from the private developments on the property, i.e. the hotel and the apartments, et cetera. I believe we do not make a payment on that loan for three years.
About two years, I believe, for the interest only payments or three years for interest only.
Right.
So this, just to correct you, all the work is not done as yet. You'll obviously have a big package to approve pursuant to your.
Six thousand dollars or something of that nature, yeah. So, so it isn't thirty-two million, it's really thirty-five million, roughly.
Right, and, okay, so to clarify further, this, the thirty-two million is at fiscal year end. So it's not going to include the IFA in progress, loan, the Independence Landing project that's in progress. And that does not include the resolution tonight that's in labor business for the sewer projects.
Okay. Just questions? Thank you very much for reporting. Let's move on to the next item, which is Klein. I think we'll get to do this one.
This one is pretty straightforward. For quite some time, we've been talking about the need or desire to change Western Days to Independence Days. And we're taking that, coming to you with that recommended change. This is the legislation that would make that official in our books. So, have some questions, you have my report.
Any questions? This is an action item? Yes, sir. Makes sense? Okay, this is an action item?
I have one, one other question.
Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Will Western Days, as it is right now, incur any expenses in order to make this change to Independence Days? And will they foot that bill themselves or does the city have any plan to assist?
Gloria, you can foot some of that.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I think whether the change to Western Days is going to, I mean, I'm sure there'll be some cost in, you know, handout material and perhaps some signage.
Yeah, I believe there was already a plan to introduce new signage anyways. So I don't think there's really, I think it's been fairly minimal, I assume. Okay. Since we're all, somebody like to make a?
Yes. I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill two zero one seven dash zero eight in full as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
Motion?
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. An ordinance may be the Independence Municipal Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Stating in Effectively. Somebody can do the second one?
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill two zero one seven dash zero eight for the second time, by title only.
Second, motion, second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Go ahead, Karen.
And ordinance may be the Independence Municipal, Municipal Code, Chapter Two, Administration, and stating in effect.
Final motion, please?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance council bill number two zero one seven dash eight.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, everybody's fine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
Will has passed and will be assigned ordinance number one five six two.
Thank you. Okay, which I think you get to come back up.
The next item is the resolution for the DEQ loan for the financing, the sewer projects. We've been talking about these for a very long time. You had initially approved Resolution sixteen dash one four three six back in, I believe it was, it was in November of last year to proceed on, on applying for the, by name for the sewer projects. We, with, along with the Public Works Director, we've identified some, some of the projects that we have pushed out to later years to look, lower some of the costs at this time. We just received the board agreement and they, the loan is at one point four two percent, which is really very inexpensive financing.
Like some of that?
And it'll be a thirty-year loan.
Great. We've discussed this on many occasions and the materials in the packet. Are there questions for the finance director?
Yes, it says in the report that the IFA withdrew their offer for partial funding. What did that do to the final look of our funding package? Did it?
What it did was we lost, basically, we lost the loan forgiveness portion of what would have been part of that funding from IFA. With the DEQ, we had, a few months ago, heard that the DEQ was not going to, also was not going to offer the loan forgiveness or grant portion. They have added that back in. It's a five hundred thousand dollar loan forgiveness at the end of the project.
So moving from one hand, one pocket to the other on the state side?
Yes, on the state side, on our side, it will be a decrease in the loan amount.
Thank you.
Was there a reason given for the withdrawal?
I don't recall. It was, it had to do with our rates, the water, or the sewer rates, and they weren't high enough.
Yeah, I think, I think that was the primary reason given. We are, they have their own idea, I had own idea of what state line average should be. As high as they'll pick our rates at, they don't necessarily meet that. That threshold is what they're looking for. I think they're also challenged looking at our, you know, how we do our municipal financing. And ours is a complicated budget and I think they just were not quite ready to make that offer on that basis. The combination of the two.
It was, it was the same reason why we didn't, weren't able to further pursue it, the USDA loan, is they had criteria that we couldn't meet.
Well, no, I thought that was different criteria, though.
It, well, it's kind of, we thought so too, when we went to the one-stop meeting back a year ago, that IFA and DEQ were going to look at it differently and they weren't going to need those same, basically the rate requirements that the USDA had. Being a depressed humidity, it turned out that they did.
Could the council get a copy of that denial letter from IFA?
As far as I know, I don't, I've never seen a denial letter. That came from Mike Genco, and I never really saw a formal denial on that, that I called. Do you?
No, I don't recall one either.
So it was a phone call?
Email, supposedly, yeah. I could further pursue it with our engineer or have our Public Works Director pursue it with the engineer to see if we could get that formal denial.
I, I would really like to see that because I. I, I would really like to see that, because I'd like to see what, how we missed on the rates not being high enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's some questions? Okay, this is an action item, and it is a resolution. I, I move to adopt a resolution 17-1466 as presented. Second. I have a motion of second. Discussion, everybody okay? Talked about this before. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Your work. Let's go to Mr. Klein.
This is back and forth. It is. So you have for me a fairly extensive staff report. We've gone through a, a request for proposal process, a request for qualification process for the selection of an engineer of record. I gave you a little bit of the history as to how we got to this point. It has to do with some of the reorganization. We think, I believe, this is a good opportunity to consolidate our engineering services in, in one place where we can, so we can approve, or fewer places at least, where we can approve the communication and networking amongst the various engineering services that we have retained. We have a, we've had a fairly wide swath of engineering services that we've had over the years doing different bits and pieces of our work. So bring in it under one rub at least, and probably elevation of a few of the handout, hands-out, it's probably going to be helpful overall to our, to our business going forward. So we did go through a selection process. We received three out, three proposals. We, the, the review team consisting of myself, the works in economic development, sat down with those proposals, scored them, and unanimously concluded that Westec Engineering, a firm that you're all familiar with, should give the nod to go forward on the, the engineer of record services. With, just as a reminder, Westec is also doing our work on Independence Landing, a specific project work.
Questions for the manager?
Just not quite sure what, what this means. Yes, that's my question.
It's, well, it's just centralizing. An engineer of record is, is, you don't have to bid every service that you require. A court, a purchasing law requires any service over $100,000, whatever it is to be, to have its own separate bidding, unless you have once, one, have a one-service contract, then you can issue, you can issue a deal, a bonus to that under a scope of service changes and benefits to that contract. Otherwise, you have to go through a formal bidding process every time you have an engineering process. That, that's very time-consuming and costly. So to sort of bring that under one umbrella, it makes a little more sense. It's short of having an engineer on staff.
How do you, how do you monitor? How do you, please, how do you, how do you, without having bid, how do you know if you're getting the right price?
Well, so the work that we've put out is primarily review work. So that's, that, you know, you, you get, engineering is like any other service. You know, you look and pick the people that aren't the best fit for your organization. We can't perform, we have no justification for a full-time engineer on staff. And particularly with all these, like, I mean, a full-time attorney on staff. You know, you get that person with a limited, with, you know, a limited field of expertise. You want, you want the expertise that a firm brings you, and you want the expertise that you're comfortable with, understanding that these people are a good fit for you, they're careful of your budget, they're, they're, they have a good understanding of what private and public work, so that they can sit at the table and negotiate on your behalf again, as Westec has done very well on our behalf, and do that work. There is going to be pieces of the work that we do as, as a city. For instance, the biggest capital project we have right now is the wastewater project. Well, that's not going to be under Westec, that's going to be under Don Whitehead, his firm. They've been doing the work on that separately. So, you know, Westec does not have to get a lot of the big civil projects, more than, more than being used for review of existing work that others are presenting, reviewing, reviewing the engineer representations from a private engineer for private work, making sure that that's all, you know, everything's good, the review of plant sets, you know, the, the, we, you know, every time we get it, every time we do a subdivision, somebody has to review the road plans, the utility plans, the lighting plans.
Then that'd be Western.
In this case, it would be Western.
How long would that agreement, how long does that last?
It's open-ended at this point. You can terminate it at any time, under its provisions. Like with attorney, our attorney contract is open-ended. My contract's open-ended.
There's some questions? Makes sense? Okay, this is an action item. Someone would like to make?
Yes. I move to approve the selection of Westec Engineering as the City of Independence Engineer Record.
Motion?
Second.
A second by the end?
Can I, have you add the addition of final language in that's proposed motion?
Oh, oh, and that, and, and the part that says the city manager be authorized?
The city manager be authorized to execute a contract for those services. I so amend my motion.
Thank you, okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Here's.
Okay, any council announcements this evening?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. I, I would read, I love reading through the management team notes because it just shows us how much all these folks do. I had a question about what is Access Independence? That was under a Reveal's report, and he said that he had a meeting with Access Independence. Is that a local group or something broader than just the city?
That's our Friday group.
Oh, that's, okay.
So that's, yeah, that's the transitional group name for what happened in our Friday meetings or month meetings.
Latino roundtable?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I think that was, oh, under Zach's report, it said there was a large bill associated with an appeal. It was, there was discussion and it was grandfathered. Is this something, it was on Independence Landing, is this something that will be coming around again?
Oh my God. Let me find that. I'm sorry, let me find the reference.
Okay, it's on page 30 of the packet, the second line down. Sorry to catch you off-guard with this.
Next one.
Right under Zach. It said there was a large bill associated with an appeal, discussion and grandfathered.
The appeal, the appeal that was marijuana appeal, right?
So, no, no assumptions. I, I believe that was it.
Right, and I believe that he was asking about passing those costs on to the healer, and it wasn't in our code to do so.
You want us to get back to you if that, if that's inaccurate?
That would be great, yes, thank you.
Okay.
And, and I'm really eager to see how Karen is going to be reformatting the newsletter. Will it still be a front and back one pager?
It'll be a four pager.
Woo!
There you go. Okay, any other additional announcements? If not?
I have a couple of other questions.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Um, we, we kind of, we didn't really talk about the franchise fees, and I thought maybe we'd spend a little more time on them. But what was, Gloria came up with, and what I came up with also, was that basically, we're going to receive from my net in this fiscal year for data, about $100,000, roughly speaking. And that's, of course, being paid by our residents. That $100,000 wasn't budgeted. Okay, so that's good. We also have another $100,000 from Mechanico that wasn't budgeted. And we're also talking about increasing water bills. Now, I'd like to, I don't want to make a motion right now, but I'd like to tell us that we take those $200,000, and we reduce the water bills by that much, because those people are getting hit. $14 and roughly 15 cents a month for mining. But if mine, it's going to pony up another 100. I mean, it doesn't cost the city, now, we can go through this thing, but it really doesn't cost the city anything for these right-of-ways at very low. And that's the same thing the charter said, at Monmouth. So it seems like it would be a good opportunity to give our residents some relief.
So let me, let me correct the information we put out. First off, the $100,000 received from Mechanico was $85,000, short of what we did budget. We had budgeted to receive $185,000 from Mechanico, only received $100,000.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so now, if you offset the 100, you're down to $15,000. We could reduce the water bill by $15,000, but I'm not sure it would be more than a penny a month.
You're saying we should take the franchise fees and?
I, oh, right, but I was being a little facetious.
I did.
Yeah, there's, there's no net savings, basically, to the city. Beyond that, you know, the franchise fees that we get are still short of what we have to come up with every year, offset the deficit, and probably will for some years to come.
I agree with that. And so let's, let's take that $100,000 and put it directly against that deficit amount, and?
But then we're still short what we, what we budgeted from Mechanico.
Well, you don't have Mechanico, yeah, that was not brought up when we made the deal with Mechanico, but that's okay. But I'm still saying there's $100,000 bucks out there that wasn't budgeted, that people are paying, and it's, it's a negative to their people. We talked, I think we had a couple of people who were talking about how it's getting harder and harder to live in Independence because of the, what keeps going up, just the things that keep going up.
We review the rates every year, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at what the projections were versus what they realize, and we'll come back with, with suggestive amendments to that rate structure the next time through.
But wait a minute.
But it's coming.
We just approved something, a $6 million bond, right? And, and wasn't there some rates that went along with that?
That was the rate structure that you saw and accepted from Steve Donovan.
Right, right. So that rate?
We don't have a settlement with a rate request to you that is consistent with that structure.
Right. So we could then reduce that increase. If it was just $100,000, not, if it's not $200,000, $100,000. I'd just like to see something go back to the people that are paying these franchise fees.
Sounds like, but we, it sounds like there needs to be a discussion what the purpose of franchise fees are and how they're utilized.
Well, then, can we put that into your work session?
We could do that. Because that would be a good time to have, because there's a whole discussion of what franchise fees, because that's what funds cities in Oregon. Because property taxes don't even pay for the police department. And so franchise fees for the use of the right-of-way are used, that's, that's what funds cities in Oregon today. Is that incorrect, Taylor?
No.
We have no flexible fees other than our, our rates and franchise fees. Those are the, and even franchise fees aren't flexible. So, I mean, they are what they are every year. We get what we receive. Our costs continue to grow. I think, you know, you're getting a preview of my budget presentation right here, because this is what I tell you every year. And we have, you know, basically, our budgets are, are, are limited on the revenue side, but not limited on the expenditure side. It's a very tough way to manage an operation. We're allowed a 3% growth in our property taxes period, other than any new growth ever received. So far, we've been fortunate to get a fair amount of new growth because largely because of what we've done as a, as a city to encourage that growth. Otherwise, we're just, we have no income tax, we have no sales tax, we just have, those are the three main revenue streams that fund government, in general government. In others, for the enterprise activities that we do or done, we're funded by the rates. You saw, you saw the analysis for many years forward, what those rates need to look like to break even in those funds. So we, we can talk about whether $100,000 or anticipated revenue to those funds will affect those rates. We're happy to do that, but, but you're talking not many.
I don't think you are happy to do that, but.
Okay. So let's put that on our list here for, for discussion. So then we could think of a more, a longer discussion on where franchise fees come from, where they go, and what they're used for. Does that sound all right to staff? Can you do that for us?
Yeah.
Okay. There's some things?
Couple things.
That's what I was waiting for.
There was, the last meeting, I don't remember his name, and he's in there, where talked about getting at least once a year, where do our utility monies go? You've done it before. Gloria, you know what I'm talking about? Like, can we, like, fix a date, so that we can go back and say, yes, we will do that, and then just pick a date, huh? Or something that's reasonable, so that we can say, yeah, we will, every year, we'll come up with that. And I, everybody I talked to was very pleased with what Gloria had done, I want to say six months ago, something like that?
Probably been a year.
It's been a year?
Yeah.
Okay. But that's, I thought that made sense.
Is that something that could be added and updated regularly on the open M D side?
It would depend on what regularly means. It's not a simple project. Annually, certainly, that is.
And I think that's really why Mr. Blotto had requested some sort of an annual breakdown.
Right, yeah.
Sounds good.
And do you, David, do you know if Zach was able to contact the marijuana people and find out if he got a copy of their notice?
I haven't, I didn't hear anything bad.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Could you write that down and see if it followed?
Other things?
I'd just like to mention, David had, had mentioned the speaker that was at the Heritage Museum, you know, and that, that particular piece will be, was recorded at a museum, will be making that available.
Can I add one more thing to that? The display, the display is, is going to be there. So if you, Mr. Friday, you didn't listen, you just.
Oh, no, no, and I, I went Saturday, but Chad had shared that the speaker that she spoke so highly of, as did you, that that was filmed, and, and his particular discussion would be available to general public, so.
Yeah, because Deborah from Winnipeg, she did her take the whole thing.
Okay, yep. So something to look forward to.
And one last thing, and this is a legitimate council announcement. The Parade of Lights and the Santa Train are coming the 2nd of December. There is a wonderfully large group of volunteers who is, excuse me, helping with this. I know they are working to get together some, some small gifts because the sources are different this year for gifts for kids, and if you are interested in making a contribution, don't make them $10 gifts, make them $2 gifts. And they go to, there's a collection point at Chase, and I think a couple of other places around town.
Okay, sounds good.
I have more if you want, but I'll throw one.
I'm sorry, that's all I have.
Would somebody like to send us to dinner?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, thank you.